You're good to go, Tim says.
Oh, great. All right, thank you for coming to the regular scheduled meeting September eleventh. First thing we'll do is a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Navara Gomez, will you lead us, please?
Yeah.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
That was the teacher in me.
Ready, begin. I like it. Thank you, Navara Gomez, and Councilmember, you're, is she online, I believe? Great, and Councilmember Atkinson is gone.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Atkinson from today's meeting.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Osteen, and second by Councilmember Cuevas, to excuse Councilmember Atkinson. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries. We are going to take thirty seconds for recognition of nine eleven, just in silence, so we'll start that now. Let's never forget the people that have come before us and doing the ultimate sacrifice. At this time, we're going to do a citizen comments period for opportunity for the member of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. There is a public hearing, so if you're here for the public hearing item, if you could wait until that time. We ask you to just come up and give your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes. So who do we have first? Come on up.
For the record, my name is Robert Schmidt. I'm with Winton Manufacturing. Our address is one seven four zero zero Winton Road, Leavenworth, Washington. Once again, my name is Robert Schmidt, and I serve as the general manager for Winton. Winton is proud to be part of Central Washington's economy and environmental leadership. Our mission is to provide sustainable composting solutions that serve residents, businesses, and local governments alike, helping to divert waste, protect our environment, and create new opportunities in our region. This summer has been particularly meaningful for us. In addition to the honor of being recognized this year as the Washington State's Recycling Association's Individual Recycler of the Year, I've worked alongside state and local partners to support wildlife recovery, wildfire recovery. During the recent Palmas and current Lower Sugarloaf fires, we continue to support and provide critical infrastructure and equipment to support fire suppression, while we're also accepting wood debris and slash for composting, transforming those hazardous fuels into a resource that supports the long-term landscape restoration. This efforts reflect the kinds of hands-on service and community commitment that we strive to have here at Winton and to bring to North Central Washington. Additionally, since January first of two thousand twenty-four, we have been offering collection services in the city of Wenatchee for all produce, for all businesses that produce organic waste. Some of our first customers were Confluence Hospital and Wenatchee Valley College. Allowing these businesses to be in compliance with the Organics Management Law has been forefront of what we do. We are also offering curbside residential services for organics collection in the city of Leavenworth now. This is our first residential contract with the city, and we look forward to providing those services. Looking ahead, Winton will play a critical role in Central Washington as our first, as the central areas for state to continue to implement those new organic laws. We look forward to working together to advance Wenatchee's goals for sustainability, economic development, and community resilience. To that end, we have extended an invitation to the mayor and to the council to join us for a facility tour this fall. We believe a site visit is the best way to see firsthand the technology, capacity, and community benefits that Winton offers. We look forward to welcoming you and showing you our work in action and discussing how we can collaborate on a path ahead. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce Winton this evening, and we are excited about the possibilities of working together and having you out to our facility this fall on a Friday. We would like to showcase how we can make Wenatchee stronger, cleaner, and more sustainable in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It should be noted, I know a couple of staff have already gone out there. And we did a workshop session about six months or a year ago on this. So thank you for the invitation. I know we have it. I know it's scheduled for Friday, so thank you for coming.
Yep.
All right, who's next? Come on up, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Poyer, councilmembers. My name is Kyle Heisinga. I'm the supervising librarian of the library just down the street. So address three ten Douglas. Happy to be here. The primary reason for being here is twofold. One is that cities are typically very involved with their library, and I feel like I'm a stranger here, and I wanted to fix that, so I wanted to address everybody here and meet you all so that I can be a more familiar face to you all. Secondly, it is library card signup month. So I brought all of the tools with me today to get everyone signed up, if you aren't already. So I invite you all, or if you're too busy today, please stop by, or stop by anyway. We'd love to see you at the library. Happy to give you a tour, talk about the things that we're doing. But yeah, wanted to extend that invitation to you all and to say hello. So thank you for all that you do.
So, thank you, Kyle. I will again make a comment. I usually don't make too many comments. So somebody's reached out to me, I don't know if it's you or not, and then they're scheduling a time to, for a tour, and so if whoever, I'm not sure.
Yeah, my colleague John did.
Okay, and then we could kind of see if the city council could all make it at the same time. So you can pass that word back and go from there. But they're scheduled, I know it's getting scheduled now, right now for me, so.
Great. Well, we'll be happy to see you, and happy to see all of you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Kyle. All right, who's next? See, no other takers anybody online? Okay, well, that'll close our comment, citizens' comment period at this time, and then we'll go to our consent items. Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hornby, and second by Councilmember Osteen, to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meeting. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. We do have some presentations tonight, and Mr. Erickson.
So this is kind of unusual. So I'm here this evening to present the first quarter service awards for city employees. Next month, you'll get the pleasure of having Kim Oglesby, our new HR director, in the backpack there doing this. City employees play a vital role in providing services to both residents and visitors from public safety to, and engineering to providing utilities in parks and recreation programs. Because the city of Wenatchee is such a great place to work, we have, and we have employees that work for us for a long time. Each quarter, we recognize employees who have reached longevity milestones. This month, we're catching up by recognizing those employees who reached anniversaries in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five. Next month, as I mentioned, we'll be back to talk about the second quarter employees. So although the staff weren't able to attend this evening, we're still proud to recognize the following individuals. So we've got park maintenance worker Ricky Lang and recreation coordinator Sydney McElroy. They've been with the city for five years. Water utility worker Andy O'Kelly has been with the city for ten years. And finally, utility billing specialist Teresa Reyes has worked for the city for twenty years. So please join me in congratulating these employees and thanking them for their years of dedicated service and the many contributions that they've made for the success of the city of Wenatchee.
Can you send out an email to city council also about, so when we see them, we can make that recognition?
Absolutely.
To them, that'd be great. And then you're going to give those to, how you're going to, how you're going to present them?
Yeah, so we'll be giving the awards to the supervisors, to their supervisors, and then they can arrange to get it to them. I know with my staff, one is out on maternity leave, the other one couldn't be here for family issues too. So we'll make sure you get those, and we've got some others coming up that have actually even been here longer than the twenty years, so. Next month should be fun.
Thank you, Dave.
You bet.
So may I have the Digital Access Day proclamation? Your Honor, I have that. Proclamation, Digital Access Day, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas, access to digital resources and technology is essential for education, employment, and healthcare in our modern society. And whereas, promoting digital access ensures that all individuals, regardless of backgrounds, socioeconomic status, have access to the tools and skills necessary to thrive in the digital age. And whereas, the NCW, NCW Digital Access Coalition, in collaboration with NCW Tech Alliance, is dedicated to bringing the digital divide, bridging the digital divide in North Central Washington through advocacy, education, and community engagement. And whereas, the city of Wenatchee recognizes the importance of fostering an inclusive and accessible digital environment for all residents. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five as Digital Access Day in Wenatchee. I urge all residents, business, educational institutions, community organizations to join in the effort to promote digital access and ensure that everyone in our community can fully participate in the benefits from the digital world. I witness, therefore, I have caused a seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eleventh day of September, two thousand twenty-five. Mike Poyer, mayor. Thanks, Councilmember Hornby. Who do we have? Come on up. Whole crew, let's go. That's kind of cool.
He's very cool, yeah. Thank you so much.
Let's get everybody up here. That'd be great, and talk a little bit about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm actually going to hand this off to a very important part of our team. This is Sophia Backes, and Sophia has been our policy intern who's been working on the Digital Access Campaign this summer. So she's leaving us, this is her last day of her internship, so it's pretty perfect. But she has been working, and I'll introduce the other members of my team here, Sarah Sanford, and Becca Fremeth, and Rosie Martin, and I'm Sue Kane. And we are part of NCW Tech Alliance, which is a regional nonprofit that really focuses on connecting people and technology. And we're excited today because the city of Wenatchee is joining about fifty of our community-based organizations and partners and other municipalities in making sure that everybody has access to technology and resources. And your leadership, this is the second year, your leadership makes such a difference. Last year, this campaign reached over fifty thousand individuals across North Central Washington, and it's really incredible to be able to be a part of something that has that kind of movement and momentum across North Central Washington.
You have to talk one thing about one of the programs you're involved with, and then you don't have to talk too much, but just one thing that you're happy to.
Well, I'm happy that I got more organizations to commit to a micro grant, and so they applied. And so I feel like if we get more organizations to do that, then we give them the money and the means to do that and to make a difference, so. Yeah.
I would just like to say how proud I am of Sophia this year. Her professionalism in leading this program and this campaign has been amazing. And I'm so excited for your next adventure after college, so congratulations, and thank you, city of Wenatchee.
I was not expecting to talk, so I will just say, I've been able to watch this team. I haven't been super involved in this process, but I know they were able to give back to the community over a hundred thousand dollars back into the community through those micro grants. And so, just like Sophia said, being able to support our other community organizations to do this work is really important to us.
I want to say thank you for joining these organizations, because it's very important, because we don't know, but four of, one in four people is needing either internet, computer, education, so this is going to help a lot of people, especially with the AI that is coming. We need to help a lot of people, and thank you.
So, since you speak Spanish, do you mind saying that in Spanish? Because we do have people that log in later, and that'd be kind of nice, if you don't mind doing that.
Oh, that's okay. Buen, estoy agradeciendo que la ciudad de Wenatchee está uniéndose a este grupo de organizaciones porque la necesidad es grande en tecnología. Una entre cada cuatro personas está necesitada de tener acceso a computers, internet, o educación en la tecnología. So este programa de verdad ayuda mucho, especialmente ahora que viene la tecnología de inteligencia artificial. Necesitamos todos aprender y cooperar, so muchas gracias a la city de Wenatchee que nos está ayudando con esto.
Well, thank you. I had no idea. Yeah, that'd be great. I can't believe, fifty thousand? Is that what you said? Yeah, that's crazy. You guys surprised me, so thanks. I'm just excited about the fifty thousand. I can't get that out of my mind.
I love it.
We have another proclamation?
Hi, Gotta, your honor.
Oh, thank you.
Proclamation, Numerica Performing Arts Center twenty-fifth anniversary. Whereas, the Numerica Performing Arts Center opened its doors in September two thousand and has since become a cherished cultural and educational institution in the city of Wenatchee. And whereas, the Numerica Performance Arts Center, through a unique public private, public-private partnership with the city of Wenatchee, has enriched the lives of countless residents and visitors by providing a diverse array of world-class entertainment and local arts programming for twenty-five years. And whereas, the Numerica Performance Arts Center serves as a vital anchor for the downtown Wenatchee, stimulating local economic activity for restaurants, retail, and hospitality industries. And whereas, the Numerica Performing Arts Center, driven by its mission to inspire, empower, and educate, has been made possible through the tireless dedication of its staff, volunteers, and generous donors. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, on behalf of the Wenatchee City Council and all citizens, do hereby proclaim September, two thousand twenty-five as Numerica Performing Arts Center twenty-fifth anniversary month, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this landmark cultural institution and its ongoing mission to bring the arts to our community. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eleventh day of September, two thousand twenty-five. Mike Poyer, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas.
Welcome.
Who do we have? Oh, of course. So.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi, Joe.
Good.
Councilmember Cuevas, you said everything that needed to be said.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you. I don't need to say a thing. I'm Terry Sloan, the new president of the board, and Lance Gonzalez, the vice president. So, and we have Zach, our box office manager, here. So, we'd like to thank the city for its continued support. Thank you very much.
Lance, gotta put you on the spot. What do you do? You're on the board, so is it a three-year term, or how does that work?
Three-year term. I started in August of last year. Been a major supporter of the PAC since I moved here three years ago. Love what we're doing, and I'm love, I love what our vision is to go forward, so.
You guys have a new executive director?
We do. Alex Haley had another obligation, so he sent me. Yeah, and I have to say to Myra, she's well-practiced at the flag salute.
Yes, you noticed that element, you ready, begin, right?
Right, right. So, we talk together.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank, thank the city for all your support. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys can't leave quite yet. We got a presentation, and then you can leave after the presentation, if you don't mind, so. Who do we got? Okay, let's go. Just a few minute presentation from Cafe, then we'll end up doing some action items after that. But, so you're welcome to stay after that or not, but it'd be nice that people could stay during this presentation.
Teamwork, yes.
I think as everybody knows, with Cafe, we always come in teams if we can. But thank you all for having us here today. We're really excited to be here to present and really a special opportunity for the city to join in on. My name is Donan Sitlaur, Tona Chakon, and I'm the executive director of Cafe. With me, I have our board chair, Dulce Negrete, and we also have our co-founder, Mrs. Alma Chakon. And of course, our amazing board, we have Myra Casique, as well as my amazing assistant, Anna Sanchez. So, I just want to start off with, let me go to the next slide. There we go. Cafe was founded in two thousand five, and we're really excited about the growth that we've made to date. It really started with Dr. and Mrs. Chakon at their office, two volunteers, with community members coming to ask for any kind of support. It could be meeting a notary. It could be helping them understand legal paperwork, and they were happy to do so. And one thing that we've learned throughout the time, that there was a lot of challenges that our community faced, and a lot of that was, you know, language barrier access and to a lot of documentation that they needed to understand fully. And so we're really excited to have grown in such a big capacity that now we have an amazing team that helps with that kind of support. And our vision is just to be able to empower community, to really be able to do that on their own, gain those skills, and I know I'll be talking about community partners, but perfect timing for NCW Tech Alliance to be here, because we have had the honor of working alongside them to help our community understand what a computer is, using it for the first time, and opening up their email for the first time, so it's been amazing. And then also providing them with a laptop to use afterwards. So thank you so much for NCW Tech Alliance and their partnership. Every year, we help about ten thousand plus families, so we're really excited to be able to do that. And as we've been able to support our families and with our growth, we have cultivated our four pillars, which is family education, community participation, developing leadership, and of course, environmental justice. And so again, we have really worked hard to create these strategic partnerships and collaborations. Of course, we can't list everybody, because we have worked with so many, and we are so incredibly privileged to have that communication and that collaboration with our community partners that are local and also statewide. And so, you know, we have thirty-plus organizations that we do work alongside, and we're, we're also constantly looking. And again, that comes with a lot of support from our community members. And through their support and doing a lot of outreach in our community, which is what we really pride ourselves in, we are able to really look at what the community needs. And again, it's, like I said, language barriers are a big issue that our community faces, as well as supporting with affordable housing, employment, and then alongside with that comes youth programming. We have seen, especially in recent months, in the last couple of years really, that there is a need for our youth to have something in their community that makes them feel like home, that they have a stake in the game, that they have a place that cares about them. And with all of that combined, there's a lot more other factors, but of course, there's mental health and behavioral health that a lot of our community needs access to. There's a lot of stigma, a lot of bias, a lot of misunderstanding and myths that go along with that. And so we're happy to be that bridge, to be able to help our community partners, like yourselves. We've had a lot of amazing opportunities to work alongside the city so that we can be able to support our community in that respect. And like I said, Cafe is growing. We are constantly looking for new partnerships and learning just ways to, to continue to support our community in any capacity. So again, we started in two thousand five. As you'll see here, we have a lot of different milestones that kind of showcase our growth. Up to two thousand twenty-five, like I said before, I started off with two volunteers, and then I came in the picture in two thousand fifteen, three volunteers, and now we have a staff of twenty-five. So it was a lot of growth, scary, but, but very rewarding, and I couldn't have asked for a better team. And so I know that in twenty, or twenty nineteen, we were able to actually work with the city in their census work, and we were able to communicate with our community, what does that mean to them, and why should they care? And also making them feel safe about it. A lot of information out there, you're afraid to get, that gets out into the wrong hands, and you lose that sense of comfortability, that sense of safety. And so Cafe has become one of those organizations that is known as a trusted organization in my eyes, where we can really be that bridge for a lot of our organizations that need that, that kind of support in reaching our community, not just here in Wenatchee, but rural and statewide. Alrighty, and I know that Mrs. Chakon, before, before I became executive director, she was the executive director, and I was programs director. And so I wanted to give her the opportunity to talk a little bit about the work that we've done alongside the city to date.
All right, thank you, Tona. I, I kind of feel like she said, well, I don't even need to be up here anymore, but I'll take it. This is probably my last time. Anyway, it's good to see all of you, and thank you for having us here tonight. Great faces, all of you. Thank you for all your work. Seen some of our city people that we've worked with before, Chief Reinfeld. So thank you all for all the work you do. So just to highlight a few of the, I think, items that we worked on with the city. We started with COVID, well, with the census first. I think the city wrote a grant, and Cafe was one of the partners to go out into rural, North Central Washington, we have in Omackton, Esken, and all these surrounding areas to make sure that we, everyone was counted. So that was our first big project with the city. And through that, we learned a lot, and we grew a lot, okay? So it was a real good step for us. Then we worked a lot with the Department of Health and also community partners here. I think the city and the county got together with service providers, and we worked together with some nonprofits came into the picture, and we did a lot of work together on COVID, making sure that our people got information. That was the biggest thing, and just resources. And then, of course, we're very honored to work with our police department, Chief Reinfeld, and with National Night Out. I think it's been great to have, to have the police force out in the South End, and they've, they've learned some Mexican dances. Be sure you ask them for it sometime. It's been a great partnership, and I think it's made our community in the South End just really more receptive and looking at themselves as a partner with our police force. So I appreciate that partnership. Recovery Navigator Program. Cafe is the lead for the Recovery Navigator Program of Chelan Douglas Counties. So we do a lot of work with our other partners. There are many partners that are doing work in recovery. And we're just really proud of the work we're doing, and we couldn't do it without the many partners in the community. But especially the chief and their staff are always there. We hold our meetings in the facility and just very, we're very appreciative. And I think we're doing a lot of great things together for our community. So I want to thank you for that. We've also participated with the city in other ventures, for example, the bike trail with the Department of Transportation also. Just getting input and feedback to help guide the work that the Just getting input and feedback to help guide the work that the city is doing. So, we have listening sessions, and we can get information from our community to see what's important to them. So, we appreciate all that. I think I'm done.
Yeah, and so, that brings us to why we're here today. A lot of the work that we have done, you know, we have shared that we have had a lot of growth, we have a lot of partnerships. And one thing that we've always known, and Mrs. Chacon and Dr. Chacon have always wanted to do, was open up a community center. And what we now want to do is open up a multicultural, multi-service community center. And essentially, we want to see a place where our community can feel comfortable, where they have a place where all of their partners are all together, and then they can have a one-stop shop. And so, that way, they can go in if they need help with housing, utility assistance, attorney services. And then, of course, the services that Cafe provides, they can go and access that instead of spending a week, sometimes two weeks, and taking time out of their day. We know that for a lot of families, it's hard to take off some days at work, especially one even. It can be really costly. And so, we want to be able to have a space where they can come and then minimize that time away from work. And we think that this with Cafe is a great organization so that we can bring everybody that we know into it, so that we can continue to grow and help our partners grow as well. She's not quite done that.
Yeah, this is just a little bit of trivia. Did you know that the city of Wenatchee had a survey done in the year 2000, where 45% of the community said, "We need a community center"? That was in the year 2000. Now, in 2022, our Valley of Future did a survey, and they again identified as the need for a community center. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh," you know? So, we have had some organizations here locally getting together to meet to, "What does a community center look like in our region? What does it look like? What do we have? What kind of services? What kind of activities?" So, it's been a journey, so here we are. And so, we thought, "Okay, Cafe is looking for a facility." Okay, and this need has been identified that we have been involved with. And so, we said, "Why not do both at the same time?" And so, we are... Thank you. She's the techie. I can't hit the button. So, again, I guess Cafe, since way back in 2000, we got together and we had a dream. A few of us in the living room said, "Okay, there is a need in our community. How are we going to address this?" And so, we started to dream. We have, Cafe was the community for the advancement of family education, became our name. And right now, we see ourselves as making history, only because housing is so hard to come by, not only for the everyday person, but for organizations. And so, we are making history because Cafe wants a home, okay? And we have been searching, and we've talked to some of you already. We've asked for input and advice. And we are now in phase one of our searching for a home for Cafe, for our staff, our programs, and some of our partners, because that's our goal, is to have some of our partners move in with us. So, phase one is that we have found a place for phase one, which is the current Community Action Building, okay? And the good thing about that is that, you all know Alan Walker. They are moving into their new place, which is going to be all furnished, and they are turning over all their furniture to us, okay? So, we don't have to buy any of that, so we're pretty excited about that, okay? And they have about 30 offices. Right now, we have six offices, and we're kind of crammed into six, to a room. So, anyway, we're pretty excited about that piece. So, phase one. Phase two, we have a facilities committee working on phase two, which is a 2030 goal of to continue the campaign to get us to a larger facility for a community center. And we will continue to work with our other community partners to ensure that happens. Because we do have a dream, we have a vision, and that's where we are today. So, right now, we're working on laying the foundation for everything that is to come. We feel we've come a long ways, but there's a lot more.
Alrighty, and then, let's see. And again, bringing it back, it's, you know, we just really want a space where our community can feel comfortable going to, bringing in local partners. It could even be, maybe we have some of you come in and have a day where people can get to talk to you and get to know you. We know how hard it is to give information out to our community, and how sometimes it is going to be hard to meet with people where they're at. But now, you'll have a home to also be at, to join people where they're at and meet them where they're at, so that that way, they feel that there's people behind the names. And so, we're really excited about that. And yeah, so like I said, our program services are going, and we're really excited to continue to grow and to bring in more, probably more staff. Right now, our limitations also mean that our space is limited, and that means that we can't grow. People come to us, and they want to continue to partner with us, but because we're not able to grow our team, and they're all very busy, I'll assure you that, it's crazy. It's hard to tell them no. But once we get people to come and talk to us, and they want to partner with us, again, we have to say no because it's that limitation. We don't have that availability to grow. And so, we're really excited for this next step. And so, now I will open it up to our amazing board chair.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for this space today. Obviously, I was able to witness a lot of the great work that the city does for our community already. So, again, my name is Dulce. I am the clinic manager at Columbia Valley Community Health, where I oversee our outreach department. So, when I attended the gala for Cafe last year, I said, "I need to be part of that," because a lot of our values and our missions are very similar, right? To be able to bridge those gaps of the underserved population and be that face. And they're not, they don't mind getting dirty and being out in the field in the migrant camps, and just like my team does. So, another thing that I would just wanted to say is an easy misconception for Cafes that they only serve the Hispanic community, and that's just not true. It is truly a sanctuary for all that need in the community. I've witnessed when I go, and there's, our unhoused population just goes there to have, you know, a cup of Brahmin or just food in general. So, it's definitely a place where our community feels safe to go to. And if you haven't had the opportunity to go, I do highly encourage you to go to the current location. As you can see, the amount of work that they're doing out of a very small, small area is just, it's so amazing, for sure. So, as part of this campaign, we're inviting visionary partners to step forward and help with this, make this possible. We'd like to ask for you to consider a gift of $100,000 towards the capital campaign. This level of investment would make you a cornerstone supporter of this effort, and your generosity would directly help us bring this vision to life. We have been knocking on doors, visiting with the community, going to every business. I kid you not, we're knocking on doors, anybody who's willing to listen and support this. And we are very confident that we're going to get to where we want, where we need to be. We're close to reaching that 700,000, and I think that with your support, we can get up to that 800,000 goal that we're wanting to reach. So, I want to thank you all for your time, and I hope we haven't taken too much as we were allotted. But thank you so much for listening.
So, you have to stay here for some questions? So, I'll let everybody else go first. I'm sure there's a few questions, or I can start off with questions?
Well, I just want to, I know, coming from the public school system, I've seen all the great work that Cafe has done. Like you said, you guys are not afraid of getting your feet dirty in any way, shape, or form. So, I just applaud the great work that you guys have done. I got to attend the National Night Out at Cafe, and it is so beautiful to see just diverse people come out in the safe space. In fact, I connected with a current student, and I said, "Who brought you here?" He said, "Oh, my big cousin." So, we even have, like, young children that live in that neighborhood that come out and know that there's a good place for them to get a meal, to have some fun, and to just be filled with this beautiful culture of acceptance and just a place to be. So, thank you for all that you do.
When's your gala? I got the invitation. I just don't have it in my mind.
Oh, well, you actually have one in your book list that we bought for you. It's going to be October 3rd. Yes, October 3rd, and we're really excited about it.
I have no idea. I'm sure we reach out to you, or you guys reach out to us, but like grant opportunities. I don't know if there's something there or not, but I just, I'm sure you guys are looking at everything you can.
I want to mention to you guys that, Mrs. Chacon, I remember the first day that you guys started your first events. I was one of the, not the participants, but I was one of the locally people there getting involved. With the time and the years that come by, I seen this nonprofit grow. And you guys have grown extremely deep inside in everybody. I seen you guys knock doors. I see you guys inviting everybody, not just the Hispanic community, I mean, diversity. It's everywhere. I'm thankful that you guys have invited me to attend in multiple events, and it's astonishing to see what you guys do, the education that you guys give to our community members, the outreach out there, even later in the evening. To me, this is a great opportunity that you guys are giving out. It's not, I know it's not that simple, but you guys have my support, and we'll continue to grow together.
I just have one comment. Everyone's already said everything I want to say, but thank you. The work you're doing is so important, and it's so important to all of the people in our community, and I just appreciate you so much.
Thank you so much.
So, congratulations on the growth, but it's sad to me because you're not visiting me at Pivas anymore. Now, you're moving on. So, for many years.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
You know, we grew. I'm glad you said that, Travis. We would have our annual at Pivas, but last year, it was just really packed, and we said, "We need to go to a bigger place." So, we're at the convention center this year.
But don't worry, we still patron it.
Thank you, guys, very much. Thanks for contributing back to our community.
Thank you. And if you want to meet some of our team, they'll be at Fiesta Mexicanas this weekend, I'm writing it down.
Thank you.
All right, the ones I said you had to stay, you're allowed to go now. Or you can stay, whatever you decide. We'll go to our action items. Our IT director.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Elizabeth Rossiter, IT director. I don't know how I'm going to follow these amazing presentations. My presentation's not going to be as exciting. So, I come to you with two action items today, the first being a motion for the city council to approve a resolution adopting an email management policy, which would be an update to our existing email management policy. So, this is a bit of a shift. The city implemented our email system, I believe, about four years ago. And at that time, as many organizations do when they implement a new system, we had the ability to retain and delete email as we needed centrally, and we made the choice to save everything. So, now that we have just in our mailboxes, not what has been deleted and is sitting inside mailboxes hidden, we have over 12 million active emails in our system. So, we have a lot of email. So, saving everything forever is a great interim solution, but long-term, we need to make a more sustainable approach. So, what I'm proposing today is... Tammy, could you project me? Thank you. There we go. So, this is really intended to improve the balance between our records disclosure and our retention. So, when it comes to records, we need to retain records, keep them for an appropriate time, and in some cases, delete those records at the end of their mandated life. We also have to make sure that we can disclose records, which means if we have it in our system, we need to be able to disclose that when it's requested by the public. As that number of email grows, that can become a challenge to do effectively just because of the sheer volume of what's being kept. So, what I am proposing is to allow our employees to take a more individualized approach to the management of their email. So, for example, some individuals, like all of you, we need to keep your email forever, right? That's a given. But for example, there might be frontline staff where we don't need to be keeping their email forever. So, letting staff manage that themselves with some education and some clear established policies and requirements about how they manage their email, I think will set us up to balance these a little bit better. Some of these include folder hold policies. So, this means we can keep manned email as needed for council members, but we can also allow users to create a folder for projects, set it to automatically expire at the end of that term that those records are required to be kept, and they will automatically expire from their mailbox. We're also creating defined post-separation hold periods. So, when somebody leaves the organization, we get a snapshot of their mailbox, and we can set a retention period on that. So, whether that's forever, in some cases, 10 years, and in other cases, many cases, six years. And then, we want to take the opportunity to really caution staff about emailing confidential and sensitive information. So, we are, of course, we know that this can happen, but we want to educate staff and make sure that they understand that there are risks to doing that. And we want to make sure that we are very careful with things like personal identifiable information and confidential data, particularly that related to our residents. Oops. I think I got past that one. So, sorry. Any questions on this? I'd be happy to entertain them.
I'm just glad you're thinking about it. Someone needs to. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. I think I will probably be in front of you within a couple of years' time to further refine this. And I think we'll hit a good balance. But it does take time, and we really do want to be cautious and methodical about it.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve Resolution Number 2025-32, adopting email management policy.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hornby, a second by Councilmember Navarro Gomez, for city council to approve Resolution Number 2025-32, adopting the email management policy. Any discussion or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I also have the next agenda item, requesting your approval for a motion to approve an ordinance adopting a policy regarding AI. This is a new policy for the city. This policy is a relatively simple policy. We're not getting terribly elaborate with it at this time. We wanted to keep it simple to really kind of introduce this philosophy around AI to make sure the city is beginning to take a position about how we use AI and how we ensure that we're protecting city and resident data in the use of that. So, we're just starting out with a few basics to really kind of educate staff and get everyone thinking about AI. We'll also be backing up this policy with some training for staff and some resource materials. So, the purpose of this is just to set guidelines for purposeful and responsible use of AI to foster public trust, support business outcomes, and ensure responsible implementation of this technology. So, our focuses are really in four areas. We really want to make sure that staff understand they cannot enter confidential data into an AI tool. There are a number of AI tools available that require no subscription, ChatGPT, Copilot, things like those. And those are generated by AI, and anything that you enter into AI is saved by those AI models. So, we want to make sure staff understand this, and they are careful about how, what data they're putting in there. We also want to make sure that staff are acknowledging when they create something in AI, they have created a public record in AI, and that those have to be disclosed and retained appropriately and managed effectively. We also want to caution staff that AI output is generally outdated. Most models are about a year behind when it comes to current data, and it is very inaccurate. So, we don't want staff blindly trusting something that they have pulled out of an AI model. We really want to make sure that they fact-checked it for accuracy, that they have done other research in addition to it. But also, we recognize that it can really increase workflows, improve them. It can foster creativity, and it's a very important tool for municipalities. I anticipate that this is a policy that we will update frequently as AI becomes more used in the organization and as these models continue to change and adapt. We'll have a lot to learn along the way in the next few years.
How long you been working on this?
This policy? Oh, seven, eight months. I think it's...
It's just interesting, because like a few weeks ago, City of East Wenatchee, I know, received it. I think the college received it. We received a public records request for AI. So, it's interesting, one, and I think you guys, I don't know if you got that email, because I have to do what you guys do. It's interesting, because one, doesn't have, we've been working on it for eight months, and we just happened to get something from the Wenatchee world, the public record request. So, I just want to recognize that you've been thinking about it before we even got, received anything. So, I appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you, and we will be training staff on some of these as well.
Any other question? Other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for city council to approve resolution number 2025-33, adopting the artificial intelligence AI policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Quevis for city council approve resolution number 2025-33, adopting the artificial intelligence policy. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Senior engineer, Mr. Hoover.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Here tonight to discuss the city's AC water main replacement project that we completed last year. You have a motion in front of you to, that requests for the city council to approve the loan closeout package and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certificate and deobligate contract amendment, and deobligation contract amendment with Washington State Department of Health on behalf of the city. The reason that we have this in front of us is a loan was taken out with the Department of Health in order to fund the replacement of the asbestos cement water lines in Seventh Street, the alleyways between Seventh Street and Eighth Street, between Eighth Street and Ninth Street, on First Street and in Shalan. The project went to bid and was constructed by H-Con last year, completed around July. We've been working on this project since 2019 on and off due to a couple of different iterations of the design. The loan from the Department of Health was designed, was intended strictly for the water line replacement and the appurtenances associated with the water line replacement. The final project scope that we had included some additional paving in Eighth Street. In First Street, we put in several pedestrian ramps as part of the process and the Department of Health won't pay for those. So the amount that we had requested and were granted for the loan with the Department of Health was just about a little over $1 million. I'm sorry, one, I'm sorry about that. $1,056,000 and change, of which we were able to get reimbursed a total of $908,000. The remainder of the funds came out of the water fund. So that having been said, the paperwork that the contractor needed to complete was just completed. The last final piece of information that we actually received yesterday from a contractor who'd been dragging their feet for quite some time. But all of the paperwork is in, all of the affidavits have been submitted and we're ready to close out this project. I would be more than willing to answer some questions about the project if you had any.
And how long you been working on this?
Since about 2019.
2019.
And this is the last bit of AC main pipe that we have in our system.
And this was brought to finance committee today, just as a note. Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the loan closeout package and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certificate and deobligation contract amendment with Washington State Department of Health on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Harold for city council to approve the loan closeout package and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certificate and deobligation contract amendment with the Washington State Department of Health on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any other comments or discussion? Thanks for your hard work. Seriously.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing. It's regarding the multifamily tax exemption agreement amendment for 315 North Worthing Street with Grand Views Riverfront Village Limited Corporation. First, we'll hear from the staff, give their report, and then we'll hear from the public. And the public will be limited three minutes on this. And then we'll turn it back to staff if needed and there we go. Glenn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. Have before you a minor amendment to an existing agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Grand Views Riverfront Village One LLC. This was recorded in January 17, 2024. There's no, there are no substantive changes on this other than there are now some errors. The errors are brought about solely by the fact that there's a boundary line adjustment done for financing to get buildings on their own parcel for financing. So now there's an incorrect parcel number address and an updated legal description. There's no changes otherwise to the agreement. It is still an eight-year agreement for, under the MFT program for market rate units. That doesn't change at all. The amendment agreement was prepared by the city attorney and reviewed by the applicant's attorney. And the city staff recommends approval of the amended agreement. And I have a, we have a suggested motion before you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing no questions at this time, I'll turn it over to the public. Who would like to come up and state your name and address and regarding the public hearing? Library card person? No? Kyle, right?
Kyle.
Yeah. Okay, then I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their action.
Just correcting an error. So your honor, I'll move for city council to approve resolution number 2025, sorry, that's 31, approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the, sorry, multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Grand Views Riverfront Village LLC, now known as Grand Views Riverfront Village One LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember O'Sean and second by Councilmember Navarro Gomez for city council to approve resolution number 2025-31, approving and authorizing the execution of amendment to the multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Grand Views Riverfront Village LLC, now known as Grand Views Riverfront Village One LLC. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Great. Reports. I'm going to do my reports a little different now on, before I forget. Our new HR director is back there, Kim Oglesby. So she'll be here afterwards if you, if you guys would want to talk to her, ask her some questions. She's going to stick around. And it sounds like Kyle's going to stick around if you guys want to sign, sign up for the library or get some more information by Cafe. I did talk to the Wash State Department of Commerce this week and Mr. DeVries and I did. And, and that was kind of interesting to come up with ideas how to, housing's a big issue. And, and I think they're very open and supportive for us. And then I'm, my, the little bit of difference I'm going to do is, is things I've kind of been working with some of the directors. I'm just going to let them, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot. They know I was going to do this anyway. So I would, if we could hear from Brad, a couple of things that's going on. And then the director, Eric Sen, is he still here? There you go. Thank you very much. And our public works director, Tom Walkholder. So Brad, if you'd go first, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Yesterday, the mayor, assistant finance director and myself met with the state auditors. They just wrapped up our 2024 financial and federal grant audits. Pleased to say that they found no, no issues and so those were clean audits. And they, they did specifically mention, they wanted to, they thanked Lisa, our assistant finance director, and Natalie Anne and Nicole, who are in the engineering department, just for, they, they had a heavy lift between the large grants and financial statements that we put together. So they answered a lot of questions from the state auditors. And the state auditors did, they also said that they consider Wenatchee kind of the model client for them because we have great communication with them. We've got good working relationships. And we have strong internal controls and they enjoy, and probably because we give them a decent place to set up their, set up their office when they're here for a month and a half. So yeah, it was very successful and it's just the staff that you've got here are, they're doing a great job and passing, passing the clean audits year after year.
Well, done, finished? Okay. Hey, Mayor. A couple of things from parks. So watch for the Chief Harmelt sculpture. It's going to be arriving over Memorial Park on Wednesday of next week. So you'll see a big giant sculpture showing up in the middle of Piscopo Plaza. Also, if you're driving by Pioneer Park, you're going to start to see next week, hopefully, the shelter going up, the new picnic shelter there. Couple trailhead items. Kenzie's Landing is going to be closed through the 19th of September and that's for PUD utility work. So completely closed up there. But what we're trying to do is take advantage of that closure, working with the Wenatchee Fire Department to do some balsam root fire restoration. So you may also see a helicopter up in that area doing some treatment of the Russian thistle, which is kind of an invasive species. So be aware of that. Saddle Rock PUD is also working on replacing 700 feet of water main up Circle Street. So Saddle Rock is not closed, but you can expect probably 30-minute delays if you're going to go up there or come back. So expect to add a little bit extra time to your trip. Also, no water available up there while they're doing that work. Hale Park, a little bit of good news for you. Skate Park is going to be reopening tomorrow. So the park will be open on a limited basis. Dog Park's still closed, but the rest of the park, for the most part, is still open during construction. Be open on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays for a while. And then finally, just wrapping up, movie in the park, we have our first one on Saturday at Lincoln Park, 7:30. It's a free movie. It's Inside Out Two. So bring your family down to watch that one. And then if you're like something a little bit different, Wicked will be on the 27th at 7:30 in Lincoln Park. It was going to be last weekend, but we got, the witch made too much smoke and so we had to bump it out a couple of weeks.
Dave, on Hale Park, let's, because the couple, the gentlemen that were here a few weeks ago, the young men that were here. So you're going to push that out on, on social media?
Yeah, it's already been out on social media.
Okay. Can we put it on ours too, Tammy? Okay, that'd be great. So I just want to make sure they know.
Yeah, I think we put it out earlier this week.
Okay, perfect.
Just a quick update. I'm happy to share that one of our capital projects that was completed last year, our Ninth Street, Street Basin Stormwater retrofit project, which was delivered cross-functionally between our utilities and engineering division. It was recognized as one of the top five projects nationally at the recent stormwater conference held in Florida known as StormCon. So just a big kudos to our utilities team and engineering teams that collaborated on this and delivered. Also thank our partners on this, Osborne Consulting, Wenatchee Valley College and J&amp;K Earthworks. They made this project happen and it treats a 24-acre basin that ultimately drains the Columbia River. So it installed a number of best management practices to treat the stormwater. And it also addressed some of the canyon drain issues. So it had a kind of a flood control component to it as well. Just wanted to share that with the council.
Thank you. Council members?
You want me to go first?
Yes.
Okay. September 4th, we had our last and final meeting of the Legislative Priorities Committee for Association of Washington Cities. And we identified the priority issues that the staff will be working on this next year, this next legislative session. Number one, they focused on enhance indigenous defense, increase state support and funding for indigenous defense and enhance state support for increasing indigenous defense workforce. Number two, improve housing supply. Housing remains at the top of everyone's list. To help cities meet their goals for more housing affordability, cities need the state to provide the time to implement recent state housing legislation and critically provide new tools to increase housing investments. Cities need new investments and funding tools to meet the needs for affordable housing in cities large and small across the housing continuum, including construction and preservation of affordable housing, homeownership and senior housing and support for tools such as local option, real estate excise tax and short-term rental taxes and expanding use of lodging taxes for housing. Number three was increase sustainability for local transportation preservation, maintenance and operations needs. Advocate for sustainable revenue that supports local preservation. Maintenance and operations includes direct distributions to cities and towns. Continue to work to improve traffic safety and explore of new tools like a highway usage fee, a retail delivery fee, an expanded transportation benefit district, TBD authority, as well as other funding options such as a sidewalk utility. I'm not sure what that would, how that would look. And finally, preserve state shared revenues, preserve existing state shared revenues for, for cities and towns. And then they had a list of significant issues. If anyone wants to see all of that, let me know. You should be getting this weekly from AWC. And I was really kind of disappointed that they didn't focus more on homelessness and public safety because all of our cities are seeing a lot of problems with that, so.
Thank you.
I don't have anything, but if I can make an invitation for Fiesta Mexicanas?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Fiesta Mexicanas is a, a great event that the city provides. We have a multicultural music starting tomorrow Friday and ends in Saturday, starts tomorrow evening, excuse me, tomorrow afternoon. There's going to be a lot of music, a lot of entertainment, a lot of food from all kinds of Latin America. There's going to be games, there's going to be nonprofit agencies available, there's going to be. I encourage everybody to go. It's a fun entertainment night to have, to hear Latin music and dance and eat a lot of good food. Friday and Saturday at Triangle Park.
What are the hours again?
Four to nine, I believe, on Friday.
I think it's four to nine Friday. 12 to nine Saturday. Thank you, thank you, my right.
The churros. Sure, I love churros. Had community action council meeting yesterday. Couple of things that's, we're really excited to move into the new building and really happy to have a great purchase of the building from Cafe. Also, all the grocery pickups that the Lighthouse Ministry did. Community Action Council is now taking over that. So the food's still going to good places. And yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Your honor, I have three meetings next week, nothing this week.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to share that I was able to join the Solid Waste Council. There's lots of new, I know we had a gal, Mrs. Schmidt, join us today talking about the Winton program and all the great things that we are doing as a city. I would like to talk about the Recycling Reform Act that is, that just passed legislation. And it won't be enforced effectively until 2030. But essentially what this is, is the Department of Ecology is really looking to see how are cities engaging in recycling and just being more cognizant of what we're doing with our waste products. So that's something that I wanted to share. And then the only other thing that I had on here, again, I attended, I've been gone for a while, sorry, you guys. I attended the National Night Out and just happy to see the great turnout at Cafe. And that is it for me.
Perfect. I did have one other thing. We get represent, representation for the Schlandt Douglas Health District Board. And if somebody's interested in that, it would start, I believe, in January. It's a three-year term. It's Monday at, Monday is third Monday of the month, Tammy helps me out here, at two o'clock. And I, my natural instinct was if, if council member Rojese would be willing to do that, because that's kind of his field. But I'm going to let you guys kind of think about it a week and maybe we can come back next, next city council and make a decision. So that'd probably be the way to do that. So I'll let you guys just kind of think about that. Interim city administrator, do you have anything? I do know he's going to Fiesta Mexicana on Saturday, the opening, the opening on the day after, which is always interesting. I am going during the day, though, but I can't make it that night.
No, I'll be there Saturday evening for the festival, excuse me, the ceremony about 6:00 PM, I believe is the time for that. So I'll be right up there. And then the only other thing I would say from the PD, just a big update. Three of our recruit officers graduated Tuesday from Basic Law Enforcement Academy. We'll be doing swearing in next Tuesday afternoon here for those three. A lateral officer we just hired from Port Townsend who started last Monday and doing a promotion ceremony for Officer Thomas Foster to corporal. That'll be 2:00 PM. That'll be 2:00 PM next Tuesday.
Thanks, Chief. Chief, clarification, that's here.
Yes, sir, in the council chambers.
I think that's it.
Chelsea.
Oh, Chelsea. Sorry, Councilmember Yower. I forget. Are you there?
We're all used to it at this point.
Yes.
No major updates for me. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentations tonight. The Cafe presentation was so great. I'm so thankful that the community can hear more about the incredible work that that organization is doing, and I'm just really excited to see what comes in the future. And then everyone else stole my thunder. I was going to invite people to Fiesta Mexicavas because it's going to be a fantastic community celebration. The chamber will be there with a booth with our Hispanic Business Council, so just invited everybody to come down and enjoy the festivities and say hello. And then next week will be another busy week, so I'll have to report next time.
Thank you, Councilmember Yower. I think we can adjourn the meeting?
Your Honor, I'll move to adjourn tonight's meeting. Second.
Been a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?